Okay, welcome to the Select Board meeting for December 11th. It's almost winter, starting to get cold, which is, and what that means is snow at some point, hopefully not too soon. Any announcements? This Thursday is town meeting again with the schools, the main event, the proposed renovation, expansion of the Driscoll School and the proposed new school at the site of the current Baldwin School. So that should be very interesting as things have been heating up. One thing that's been very interesting to me through this whole process as we've been at this for six years that I've been at it is every site that we've identified is potential, potentially for a new school has generated very intense organized opposition. So I guess Baldwin is no exception to that.
Well, but it's a good plan and we're going forward.
Right. Okay, public comment, I see none. So let's move into the agenda and we have the minutes for November 27th. I have a couple of little typos.
And I've given Kate some edits as well.
And I'll move that we approve the minutes as amended. All those in favor, please say a. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person, select person, me. Chair votes aye. I'll just note for the record that select person Hamilton is away on a trip tonight and I believe she's going to be away Thursday also, she'll miss town meeting. And now we have.
And we should just reiterate that we did not meet in executive session, it was canceled.
Right.
So we didn't meet in executive session, here we are in public session.
Next item is question of authorizing the chair to execute two documents regarding use of capital funds administered by HUD. Mr. Viola.
Good evening, Joe Viola, Assistant Director for Community Planning. As outlined in the Brookline Housing Authority's five-year capital plan, they're looking to undertake a number of capital projects at a number of their developments townwide over the course of fiscal years 2018 to 2022. Prior to submitting a request for release of funds, which is part of your vote this evening, they have to undergo its known as an environmental review process. And as I think you heard me say on other occasions, environmental review requires an analysis of the impacts that a HUD-grantee's project will have on the surrounding environment, if any. In this case, the town is serving as what's known as a responsible entity. We're helping the housing authority through their environmental review. We review the findings of analysis that was done by a consultant that the BHA brought on board to review the projects that were in their five-year capital plan. Based on the information found in the environmental review, we didn't see any projects propose significant environmental impacts. So to meet HUD's requirements, we provided public notice of the availability of what's known as environmental review record, which is the environmental review document and all the supporting exhibits that go along with it. The notice noted that there was a 10-day public comment period that began on November 29th and elapsed on December 10th, and we have not received any comments related to the release of funds for the housing authority's capital improvements projects, which takes us to the vote under miscellaneous item B, if there are no questions.
Any questions? I think this is a great project and it's great that we're going for and eligible for federal money. So that's a good thing, especially in this day when, as the federal government is doing less and less in this area, especially under the current administration. So I'll move that we authorize the chair as certifying official for the responsible entity to execute two documents on behalf of the Brookline Housing Authority related to the use of capital funds administered by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and Environmental Review Record and a request for release of funds and certification. All those in favor, please say a. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. And we have a couple of temporary, or we have more than a couple, we have a few, we have a bunch. The number is increasing. So, so I'll move and I'll move it as an omnibus motion that we grant two temporary wine and malt beverage sales licenses to Lars Anderson Auto Museum at 15 Newton Street as follows, one for corporate dinner reception to be held on Wednesday, December 12th from 6:00 to 10:30, and for corporate holiday luncheon to be held on Thursday, December 13th from 9:30 to 4:30. I'll also move that we grant three temporary all kinds alcohol non-sales licenses to Lars Anderson Auto Museum, 15 Newton Street as follows, one for corporate holiday party to be held on Friday, December 14th from 5:30 to 11:00, for a corporate holiday party to be held on Saturday, December 15th from 5:30 to 11:00, and for a holiday party, lots of parties, to be held on Wednesday, December 19th from 6:30 to 11:00. And we have two all kinds alcohol beverage sales licenses to Pine and Manor College at 400 Heath Street, one for a holiday party on Friday, December 14th from 7:00 to 10:30, and for a birthday party on Saturday, December 15th from 5:00 to 10:00. Lastly, I'll move that we grant a wine and malt beverage sales license to Boston University for a cocktail reception to be held on Thursday, December 17th at 43 Hawes Street from 4:30 to 7:00. All those in favor of all those motions, and they look okay?
Yeah, the police department has reviewed the applications and sees no reason to deny them, and I will vote aye.
Okay. Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay. Moving on to our main calendar, and we have a grant for the John Wilson Project from the Brooklyn Community Fund Foundation. And I know there's been a committee working on this.
Hello. My name's Kaitlin Haynes, I'm the Assistant Director in the Office of Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations. The Office of Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations seeks the Select Board's authorization to accept a grant from the Brookline Community Fund for the sum of $98,562. The funds will be used to purchase and install a portrait sculpture of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., a piece that was created by the late Brookline artist John Wilson, and it will be installed in the lobby of Town Hall. And behind me, I have a few people from the committee and from BCF to have a few words about the project.
Okay. Ms. Amory.
Thank you so much. Jenny Amory, the Director of the Brookline Community Foundation. I think this is one of the proudest moments since I've worked at the foundation. This has been an exemplary community group led by Rob and Mac with many key folks here in the audience, and I just want to say, it's been, I think it's such an important positive contribution to the town of Brookline. The amount of organizing and time that this community group has been doing over many months to raise the money, we have been a small part and a vehicle for this grant to be awarded to the town. So we very much appreciate the opportunity to be part of this amazing project.
Rob MacDewart, Shared Experience builds community, and this project has been a wonderful community building event. Hundreds of people stepped up and ponied up and gave money. Moral generosity has been our watchword. Moral generosity was embodied in John Wilson and in Martin Luther King. And John Wilson was an important American sculptor and Brookline's own. So we get to honor him with this sculpture. It is a robust act of the imagination and, you know, history. On occasion, we can get history and hope, hope and history to rhyme, to get hope and history to rhyme. So John lived a truth, Martin Luther King lived a truth. Keith said, "Beauty is truth. Truth is beauty, that's all you need to know." So there it is, we can look at it and see it and, thank you.
Sure. Mr. Daves.
Hi. A little more than two years ago, I didn't know who John Wilson was. And this has been a tremendous journey for me personally, and I think an important one now for this town. One of the joys was getting to know John through his art and through the contacts, through the people that knew him. Mac knew him, but I've since, in the last two years, I've met his family, Julie, Julia, his son, his daughter, Erica, and Roy, and it's been, it's been nothing but a joy. They're longtime residents, John lived here for 50 years, he grew up in Roxbury, and there's a connection between Brookline and Roxbury too, because his work and his community is still there in the Roxbury area. But anyway, I'd like to thank our committee. We had some folks that really, we got together for writing letters and for sending out requests for donations, and I'd like to thank the people who really worked hard. Chobi Hoy, Ann Turner, Mac Stewart, Tommy Vitolo, Lynette Glover, Skip Griffin, Carol Troyan, Mark Gray, Jack Curtis, Charles Terrell, and Mac. This was Mac's idea. It was his inspiration and he brought this up, and it was just, from the very beginning, it was 100% positive. Over 300 different businesses and organizations and individuals gave, from anywhere from $10 to $5,000. But we couldn't have done any of it without the Brookline Community Foundation. Jenny gave us the structure to accept, accept the donations and also the encouragement. She was pivotal in this, or the Brookline Community Foundation was pivotal. I also like to thank you folks, because from the very beginning, when we had this idea, that was the first thing we had to do, is say, "Does this make sense for the town and for town government?" And there was no hesitation from the top. And Mel also has, Mel Kluckner, Town Administrator, has opened the doors for anything we needed. And just last week, we met with Charles Simmons and Dan Bennett from Building. We know where we're going to drill the holes, we talked about the lighting, and it's all going really, really smoothly. The Lloyd Jolnall and Caitlin Hayne star have pitched in. So now when this money's going to you, the party's on your dime.
Yeah.
And it's going to be, it's going to be, they're going to co-sponsor with us, and we're going to work hand in hand to make this a celebration. So on January 27th, this is, it's the weekend when there's no football game.
Right.
It's the weekend after Martin Luther King Day, so this is pretty, pretty, pretty good timing. It's going to be a small space downstairs, but we're going to have music, we're going to have the family, and we're going to have some dedicatory remarks, some from you, I hope, Mr. Wyszynski.
I hope so.
But, so we've got these posters, you'll see them going up around town, we will be publicizing this, it'll be overcrowded. The one thing that we wanted to, or one of the things we wanted to do with this whole project was not only to bring Martin Luther King's sculpture here, and we wanted to educate about John. We had an event back in April, which was spectacular, but we won't unfortunately during the dedication have time to really get into why, you know, what this impact is. And so we've asked Dr. Edmund Barry Gaither, who is the Executive Director of the National Center for Afro-American Artists, who knew John very well, knows his work in detail, and we're partnering with the Brookline Historical Society to have a focus lecture at the library on March 24th. So that will be the second piece of our celebration. Anyway, we just want, I think this has been a really, like I said, 100% positive experience for all involved. But just to help us in our promotion, can we get a picture?
Of course.
And with, does anybody, does anybody from the committee want to say anything?
I'm checking.
You sure?
You've got a late night.
But, but, so can we get, do we have a wide angle lens or something?
Sure.
Because the tablet, the tablet prints something.
Let me, let me do the formality.
Okay, alright.
But.
I wore a tie, especially for this occasion.
So I will move that we accept a grant in the amount of $98,562 from the Brookline Community Foundation, made possible by generous contributions from the public, in order to fund the purchase of a bust of Martin Luther King Jr., sculpted by the late Brookline artist John Wilson, to be permanently displayed in Town Hall. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
So how do we manage this?
Everyone a good iPhone?
Well, can we get close to the wall?
Yeah, I actually all get together and.
So you usually do it from the left.
Yeah.
It's a lot easier than the main school.
Franklin, so you showed up at 100% of the cost of the main school.
Yeah, you're going to go through the ride.
Just taking your.
Chambers meeting the first thing, it's like, history teaches us not to.
Yep.
Well.
What are you doing?
Who goes there?
How are you?
I'm sitting.
How are you?
I'm here.
I'm here.
Chobi's here.
Come on, Chobi.
This picture was.
First chair.
About a big part of.
Okay, ready?
One, two, three.
Money.
All right, I got a bunch.
I don't need to be in it, I think that's fine.
I'll take it.
Can somebody else in the audience?
Make this gentleman, have fire gentleman.
She looks like a cheater.
She's a little technical skill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you wish other things were seen?
It's a little southern.
Yeah, that's your problem.
Yeah.
I hope so.
If you want to try one of your.
You don't want to do anything there.
Okay, we have two firefighter positions.
Chief Sullivan.
Good evening, John Sullivan, Fire Chief. Tonight, I'm here to ask for authorization to fill two more positions. We currently have 10 positions authorized by the board. We have recently had a retirement from a long-term injured on-duty retirement, and we also anticipate one further retirement in January prior to the start of a class we hope to have in March. The HRD has put out a list of the new, the new fire list from the last test that was done at the end of 2000 and, sorry, in April of 2018. We currently have 28 Brookline residents on the list.
Oh, really?
The factor for the list and the reason we're asking for those, including one of our anticipated retirements, when you ask for your eligibility list, you get the two N plus one, which would give us 25 names, which would give us just about everybody on the list from Brookline at this point. From that, we will pare that down through the application as well as the background checks and so on, and hopefully to get 12 eligible and fine candidates from the town of Brookline to fill the ranks of the Fire Department. So tonight, we're asking for authorization for those two, one which is already currently open, and then one anticipated in January.
Okay. Questions?
Yeah.
Select person Green.
Among, I may have, I was distracted, so if I got something, I get something wrong here, correct me.
No worries.
So you have a pool of how many Brookline residents?
There's 27 Brookline residents. The way that the civil service eligibility list is calculated, the first name on the list is the son of a firefighter who was killed in the line of duty. He is a Boston resident, but by the way that the eligibility lists are calculated, that name appears at the top of all eligibility lists that go out. So he is number one, and then there are 27 additional Brookline residents. We have two that are veterans at the top of the list, and then the remaining 25 are non-veteran Brookline residents. And then after that group, you would get into the disabled veterans who are non-B Brookline residents, and then on down the line.
So among that group, is there any racial diversity and gender diversity?
It appears that there is. There is no, this, the initial list does not break that down in particular. You can, you can extract that there is perhaps some racial diversity among that group. As far as gender, there are two women among the 27 Brookline veteran residents. Whether we get to them or not, they're a little further on down the list, is a matter of the background checks, and they probably, at this point, with the two N plus one, we'd be looking at 25 names off the list. I don't believe they will appear in the initial calling for signatories, so.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? I'll move that we authorize the filling of two firefighter positions in the Fire Department. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Hang on a second. We understand there's a tragedy in Worcester, and as soon as I heard it, I thought of you and your leadership in that department, and I know you're feeling it, and the men and women you work with feel it, and please accept our condolences and best wishes.
I truly appreciate that, Mr. Chair, and for those who have reached out to me from the town and from the Fire Department, I want to thank them from the bottom of my heart. You know, I did the 30 years in Worcester and still have a lot of great friends there. Firefighter Roy, I didn't know him well, but I didn't know him. I was, I was at the end of the stage when he was sworn in as a firefighter, and there's that picture that you see now with him and his daughter, and, you know, it's a tragedy for the town, and, you know, that's why, you know, we're pushing so hard in this town to make sure that we have that training facility up and running, and that we're giving our firefighters the best possible opportunity to learn their craft and to make great decisions on the fire ground. We have wonderful leadership here in the town, and we're only looking to expand their professional development and their capacity, and to build the next generation of leaders here in the town of Brookline, so that we can hopefully, you know, with God's good graces, avoid any, anything like that happening here in the future. Unfortunately, in the line of work that, you know, we choose as a profession, it's always a possibility, but as I've said many times in many of the classes that I've taught over the years, it's, there's no firefighter that ever pins the badge on that says that it's never going to happen to me. I don't think we're that arrogant. What we, what we try to do is to make sure that we're prepared for the inevitable time when the circumstances are such that it appears to be overwhelming and that we will make good decisions and come out on the right side of the coin. And, you know, God bless firefighter Roy and his family, and my hardest with the Worcester Fire Department, and my friends there who are suffering right now. And the Brookline Fire Department was, has always been supportive of all of the Fire Departments across this Commonwealth, and I'm sure they'll be en masse on Saturday for the funeral for our fallen brother. So thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the members of the Select Board, and Mr. Kluckner for your courtesies and your extension of kindness to me, and thank you again for the two positions, appreciate it.
I hope I'm not speaking out of place, but I hope if there's anything that your department needs in terms of equipment, training, whatever, even though, you know, we're always in a tight budget, at least let us know what would make your job easier and safer, and the work of your men and women safer. And we're, we're open to it even in tight budget concerning situations.
I truly appreciate that, selectman and select person Green, and, you know, the facility that we're building is going to be state-of-the-art. And once we, once we have that up and running, we have a lot of great minds over here at the Brookline Fire Department who are looking to develop programs and to bring programs in. You cannot be solely insular when it comes to, it's a lesson that we learned very hard in the Worcester Fire Department back in 1999, that you need to look outside the department and see what the best practices are, and bring in experts from the outside to do, train the trainers, and make sure that our folks are getting the next best training and the education and professional development that they need. So I will be back, I'll be back before you, looking for some funding for those types of opportunities. And we hope to be a, we hope to be a beacon in this area to all of our mutual aid partners around town. Boston doesn't have to be the only game in town when it comes to, you know, being leaders in the metro community. Brookline has its place, and we intend to put our best foot forward, especially with a brand-new training facility, and be a beacon to all of our neighbors, big or small. And they will be looking to us, and with your help, we, we hope to make this a truly inspirational Fire Department for our neighbors to, to look to and to, and to make sure that we're, we're doing the best by our firefighters. So thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. We have library personnel, we have two positions in the library, cataloger and library assistant.
That's correct. Hello, I'm Callan Vignoli, Assistant Library Director, here on behalf of Sarah Sloman. I am requesting authorization to hire for two positions, as you said, the cataloger one, and the library assistant one, technical services. These openings came about as a result of one promotion and one resignation. We will be posting both, both of these jobs on the Mass Board of Library Commissioners site, as well as those of the library, the American Library Association, their Black Caucus, and Chinese-American Librarian Job Boards, Simply Hired, and the town's other standard channels, and we are eager to start posting these jobs at job fairs.
And we hope to be a beacon in this area to all of our mutual aid partners around town. Boston doesn't have to be the only game in town when it comes to, you know, being leaders in the metro community. Brookline has its place, and we intend to put our best foot forward, especially with a brand-new training facility, and be a beacon to all of our neighbors, big or small. And they will be looking to us, and with your help, we hope to make this a truly inspirational fire department for our neighbors to look to and to make sure that we're doing the best by our firefighters. So thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. We have library personnel. We have two positions in the library, cataloger and library assistant.
That's correct. Hello, I am Callan Benyoli, Assistant Library Director, here on behalf of Sarah Sloman. I am requesting authorization to hire for two positions. As you said, the cataloger one, and the library assistant one, technical services. These openings came about as a result of one promotion and one resignation. We will be posting both of these jobs on the Mass Board of Library Commissioners site, as well as those of the American Library Association, their Black Caucus, and Chinese-American Librarian Job Boards, Simply Hired, and the town's other standard channels. And we are eager to start posting these jobs at job fairs in the area as well.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
Well, I appreciate the fact that you seem to be proactive in terms of the diversity of the pool of applicants.
Yeah, we do our best to be a place that is reflective of our commitment to serving everyone.
Okay, so I'll move that we authorize the filling of two positions in the library, cataloger one and library assistant one. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you. Have a good night.
And we have building department, building inspector. Mr. Bennett.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'm here to request authorization to fill a vacant position in the building department. Inspector Jim Crowley took a position with another community, and I'd like to fill this position as soon as possible. We will work with the HR department to find the most diverse pool of applicants as possible. I also reach out to the inspectors' associations across the state and ask them to post this vacancy. And then there is an email, inspector email distribution list that I put that on as well.
Okay. Questions from the board? I'll move that we authorize the filling of the local building inspector position in the building department. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the letter which results from the comments we heard last week regarding the proposed project at 500 Harvard Street. We had a public hearing last week, and we heard from members of the public. And then what we try to do is summarize some of the salient points, and also inject our point of view into a comment letter to the, in this case, it's mass housing, so they can consider when they issue the, if and when they issue the project eligibility letter. And the letter, I'll just summarize some of the key points. It reminds mass housing that the HCD has certified the town's housing production plan there, therefore, we're under a safe harbor. And then points out that we do have a whole bunch of forty-B projects within, under a mile of this project. Five forty-B projects approved within the past four years totaling one hundred eighty-nine units, three pending projects for four hundred ninety-six units, and then another project for twenty-five units, combined for a total of seven hundred and ten units within walking distance of this site. And that, I think, we asked Ms. Steinfeld to point out that mass housing should consider the cumulative effect of all these projects. But I think something good can happen on this site, and I think the letter says that, but what's being proposed, we think, is just way too big, and it doesn't have any reasonable setbacks. It doesn't respect the budding property at 514 Harvard. It asks the developer to incorporate usable open space into the site. Comments on the proposed parking stackers that we don't have experience yet, so we'll be taking a good look at that, especially the noise impacts. And there are close neighbors, so the noise impacts will be very important. We also comment on the parking, six spaces for thirty residential units plus retail seems very low to us. We say that the affordable unit should have the same access to parking as the market-rate Asks for significant improvements to the design, including articulation of the facade. And also makes a plea for the applicant to meet with the neighborhood and listen to identify and mitigate their concerns. And then, those are the specific comments, and then there are comments that we add to all of these letters, a request for a noise study, comprehensive shadow study, model of the project, site plan showing budding buildings and setbacks, property lines, site sections, traffic and parking circulation study, detailed information regarding the parking system, stormwater and drainage, and a waiver list in tabula form. And it's been our experience that those are the kinds of things that the subsidizing agencies do pay attention to and make a condition of the PEL, and we hope they'll do that here. So that's a summary of the letter. Is there any comments from the board?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. First of all, as usual, there are words that sort of stick in my craw, I think is the right phrase.
So which word stick in your craw?
Ugly, ugly. Frank, it says here, it presents as a looming solid and frankly ugly mask. My concern is that it's really not our place to make those type of aesthetic judgments if there are specific things that sort of stand out as, quote, not pretty or ugly or whatever.
Where does it say that? I remember it saying that.
Top of the page eleven dash two.
And we should say that, for example, that the style is inconsistent throughout the building, or that, you know, the decorative elements stand out in a way that is, you know, whatever, however you say it. But using the word ugly, I think, it's really not our place to make those judgments. The other question I had had to do with the parking, with respect to the affordable units. Is that, is it normal to require that affordable units get free parking? And that question is coming from, you know, the concern that many people have, that making parking too easy and cheap sort of increases the demand in a way that we don't want to be doing, so.
The ZBA has typically been very concerned that low- and moderate-income people not be charged for parking in excess of the income limitations. It's a standard-
So it would be a parking fee, but not the market rate? Is that what you're saying?
The ZBA has expressed a preference that basically parking be free for the low- and moderate-income tenants.
Okay.
But-
I'm fine with that, it's just that, you know, that seems to be going against some other currents in town.
I think the intent is to protect the low- and moderate-income residents, as opposed to looking at it as a parking incentive, or-
Distance incentive.
Right.
I have a question.
Yeah, sure.
I'm not concerned about the characterization that it's ugly, but-
I wasn't either, but I'll go with the flow.
But I am concerned about the tone of the fourth paragraph, where we acknowledge that the proposal could potentially be well-designed mixed-income development. But it, we have to stress that it's got to be a small, well-designed development. It can't be, you know, they can't lop off a floor and say that's satisfactory. It's not. So I would use, I would say could potentially be a very small, but well-designed, because that's the truth. And the other thing that I'm concerned about is, I read over these letters by the neighbors, and one of them talked about the proposed building as a wood-framed building. And we do wood-framed buildings in Brookline all the time, but given the proximity of this building to the ones next door to it, and even behind it, I think that may pose more of a danger, and I would want the fire marshal to weigh in on that. Because, the fire commissioner, fire chief. Because, you know, it is cheaper, certainly, to build wood-framed, but given that it's so close to another building, it's not got any space, virtually none, even if it respects the fact that there are windows and it comes in very short, which it should, it's still an issue. And I understand it's probably wood-framed now, but that doesn't mean we need to continue it to be-
Yeah, but there are, of course, codes, and the, I was thinking with respect to select person Heller's comments on the size, I think we should note that this, it's a very small parcel, and that if there's any chance of us recommending to the ZBA to do something within the safe harbor, it needs to respect the scale of the parcel and the scale of the adjacent buildings all around, I think.
That's fine. I mean, that's the truth, is that the parcel is very, very small.
In fairness, I mean, that's bullet point number one, right below that paragraph.
Right, yeah.
Right, but it doesn't say, it said, it's totally out of character for the area, too big for the environment, but it doesn't talk about the fact that this parcel itself-
It's too small, yep.
Yeah.
Is really small.
Yeah, so maybe a sentence in that bullet would cover it. So, you know, basically, you know, you're looking at trying to come in above zoning, so you're going to really have to entice us, and I don't know if that's possible, but I'm all ears.
My only, I think this is a strong letter by and large. I think it hits what I at least heard last week. My only nitpick is, in that bullet, I was just referring to the first one, I would end that first sentence after the word "too big" and strike the last three words. I think it's, it actually strengthens the point by just saying the proposed building is simply too big.
Got it. Okay. So I guess the way we'll do it, since we're not, when does this have to go?
Not until the twenty-first.
Oh, so do we all want to sign it, or do we want to authorize me to sign it? Do we care?
Authorize you, is what we usually do.
Yeah, okay. So the vote will be to authorize me to sign the letter, taking into account all the comments that we've heard.
Can I ask a question? Regarding the stacking system, I mean, we don't have much experience with that type of parking system, but, I mean, it's common throughout the country. Do we ask the developer to give us some information on the noise level or the specific type of stacker system they're using, so that we at least know, you know, what to expect when the system goes into effect?
Absolutely, and we also engage a peer reviewer with specific knowledge of parking systems.
Ms. Gilbert might have some information on that?
Yeah, I just wanted to address that question. Actually, on the already permitted forty-B down the street that the Nash's are working on now, we have the same system, and the ZBA asked for detailed information. It was provided with respect to the noise. We actually flew in the consultant that designed and engineered these systems, and he spoke at the ZBA hearing. And so all that information is already in the record on their prior project that's underway now. Thank you.
So is that the one, that's the one over by, it's across from-
Four fifty-five Harvard.
Okay. What's the timeframe for that being operational?
TVB, no.
Late summer, so-
You heard that, late summer.
Okay. So we'll have some experience with that pretty soon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I'll move that the board authorize the chair to sign the letter as amended, substantially in the form that we discussed. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So now on to warrant, consideration of the warrant articles. Funny, I, Mr. Doggett asked what time he should arrive, and I'm thinking, looking at the calendar, thinking, I said seven-thirty, so we're on time. Well, it's seven, seven-twenty-eight. I said we might be early, right? So we're two minutes early. Okay, so we, the board differs in its recommendation from the advisory committee, and given the compressed vetting schedule for these warrant articles, there really wasn't an opportunity for us to hear the advisory committees, or see the advisory committees rationale and their motion, so I thought it would be good for us to consider that prior to town meeting, where we were not under the intense time pressure of the night of town meeting. So in Article Two, which is the Driscoll School, the board differs in its motion. In the advisory motion, it's the same with the exception of the following phrase, with the condition that no funding may be used for the design of non-emergency fossil-fuel-operated building systems. And that was a condition that was voted last week. The advisory committee didn't, last week, have the benefit of staff analysis of this. Staff analysis was presented last night with an opportunity to ask questions, and the advisory committee was not persuaded to change their vote. So we have the option of sticking with our original vote, or adopt the advisory committee's So I'll let Ms. Morelli, I'll give Ms. Morelli an opportunity to tell us pretty much what she told the advisory committee last night, and we all have a memo from her in our packet.
Okay, so you have the memo, and what that outlines are the fact that, number one, we are all on the same team. We all support a mandate focusing and upholding a- We, we all support a mandate focusing and upholding a goal of all-electric, because now is the time to assess that these buildings are going to be here for a long time. An important point to understand is that there are many engineering solutions for all-electric, and it isn't really either-or. A lot of that is dependent on what the site can accommodate in terms of, say, geothermal wells, project specifications, and the technology. We're also showing from our work, very active work, on the Brookline High School project, where we are applying this, this kind of whole-building design approach to achieve a net-zero school. We, from that experience, we can tell you that you do have to expand even your cost-benefit analysis methods to understand not just simple payback. Certainly, first costs are important. They could be lower, they could be higher. Life-cycle costs could be lower, could be higher. Service life could be shorter or longer. Maintenance, operations, operations and maintenance is also key as well. And we feel that it's our duty to our employer, people who are making decisions, all stakeholders, certainly the user agency whose budget is affected by this, and our constituents, to provide that information in a very non-biased, but very comprehensive manner. So we did get into some specifics based on what we learned, because the Brookline High School project actually does have a lot of constraints. It is not a net-zero project, it's not a zero emissions project. Without any mandate whatsoever, we did examine an all-electric option. The mandate at the time, however, was lowest EUI and lowest life-cycle costs.
EUI is...
I'm sorry. EUI is energy use intensity, that's the energy use per square foot, and that's how you can assess how energy-efficient your design is. So the energy efficiency certainly is important, but it's not directly about, you know, emissions. It's not about using fossil fuels on-site, okay? Even though we will have solar on the roof, that solar system will be really small. Instead of like a 250 KW system, it'll be about 30 KW and 40 KW respectively, Cypress and STEM. If you can't do geothermal, which you cannot do with the Brookline High School project, then you have to look at some other options. There's variable refrigerant flow, there's electric resistance, and there are also other things. If you can't do geothermal, there might be cooling tower options. It is actually really exciting to think about all the different options, engineering options that are available, but it's more like a puzzle, on a matrix. And because, you know, we want to elevate this discussion properly to people who, experts who can vet it, but also the people who will be affected by that decision. It's, I'm not saying that if any additional costs are required, that that's a drawback. It's something that has to be planned for. And I think I might wanna pause at this point and say, from what I observed, there was a lot of passion in the room, which is very important for me, kind of doing this work. We're trying to make this a functional area that really fits into every department. So it was very gratifying to see people so passionate about it. But I have to say, I think we're all on the same team. We just have different ways of wanting, we all want this to happen. So there are the policy folks, and then there are people who are concerned with, like, the operations and funding of it. And you need both in order to make something happen. So the fact that perhaps staff is providing these cautionary notes does not diminish our passion and our dedication, and also our expertise. We have learned a lot that other communities are learning from, including commercial property owners in Brookline are learning from. So, that said, I think that it's, um, it's important to be transparent. I do wanna say that we're not precluded, from the discussion last night, we're not precluded from analyzing other options. In fact, we have to, because for, to get our utility incentives, we have to look at a baseline. And that baseline is predicated on the ASHRAE that has to do with HVAC standards. So you have to look at a baseline. So you will be comparing your, the all-electric options against a baseline, and that is actually very instructional. It's really helpful for people to understand, you know, your all-electric options might be better in, in lots of cases concerning some costs. That's really educational to see, and I think it can be really helpful if people are, there's trepidation, you can show them that, that it's not every decision-making comes with a premium. I think that's important to show. So to allay your concerns, that is going to be part of the process, just providing that analysis because we have to. And from what I heard at advisory, no one is precluding that type of analysis. It just seemed to be strictly on the design itself, couldn't consider any, any gas boiler options.
Yeah, that was stated as the intent. I just wanna make sure that the language, okay, so there's kind of two levels here for, for us to think about. One is, do we wanna offer to town meeting a, what I'll call a, I was gonna say a clean motion, a unrestricted motion, let's call it that, versus, um, the advisory motion, where it's, I think it's, it's this board's intent, um, as, as we said last week, to prefer a non-fossil-fuel-operated building system. But we, we weren't last week willing to commit to it completely unequivocally upfront until we had the analysis and knew what we were committing to, which to me is the prudent way to do it. But, you know, last night I heard, you know, given our climate action goals, if we don't start now, um, you know, when are we gonna start? Then is, is the technology there? Yeah, yeah, I don't know. I'm not an engineer, I don't know the answer.
Yeah, I mean, there are a number of things. You know, people talk about fossil-fuel-free, and electricity is not fossil-fuel-free. I mean, the grid is one grid, and electrons are fungible. It comes from everything from coal in some parts of the country, I don't think Massachusetts, to, to wind and solar energy. So I think it's a question of, let's just be honest with ourselves and recognize that, you know, we should build buildings that have the capacity to become all-electric when there is a real opportunity to get all-green electricity. But that doesn't mean that at the beginning, you don't have a combination of, of systems. And I think that that also suggests that, you know, if we really want to accelerate the, the development of buildings that are fossil-fuel-free, then solar panels on buildings are, are more important maybe than all-electric buildings, because solar panels would be fossil-fuel-free, whereas the grid is not, so...
You could have, if I may respond?
Yeah, please.
So, just to think about the grid, you have a choice, and that's, it's important to understand, you have a choice to put solar on the roof to generate, and you can also, in conjunction, you can also purchase green power.
Where does that green power come from, though?
Yep, so with our Brookline Green Electricity Program, we purchase renewable energy that is generated locally, and 95% is from wind.
But how does it get from the generator to your house?
So we, all we do is, we can ensure that there's, say, if we want to purchase REX with additionality, that we're putting new, so we can't, we can't trace the electrons to our facility, nobody can do that. But what you can do, if it's, you're buying green power, is you're assuring that you're retiring REX. That's, that's what you do, that you are using renewable energy, and that, because that's what you're paying for. So you can't trace the electrons, but once you, you purchase, they are retired. Or you can, if there's additionality, then you are putting new renewable energy on the power grid. So your investment, you are actually paying, investing. So I guess there's another aspect, there is gonna be a vote on the schematic design at town meeting. So, you know, I think that one of the points that I wanted to make, and I think it might have gotten, maybe it wasn't a great, pithy soundbite, but as I said, we all want the same thing, and we all want assurances that there'll be a commitment. For the people who are very passionate about this amendment, it was really about commitment to the policy and, and result. And implementers, we wanna make sure that we can implement, so we just felt the amendment wasn't a very affirmative one for, to ensure that we could construct, operate, and maintain. So we're, we're just not sure if there are going to be opportunities for any value engineering that would compromise our sustainability goals. And that was the reason for our concern, or maybe we just didn't understand how, how much that amendment would really afford us the, the opportunity to, to implement the mandate.
Well, if I understand what you're saying, Maria, I think what you mean is that, for instance, the maintenance on the air-source heat pumps, I actually have an air-source heat pump.
Yes.
And so I know that, you know, you have to have it checked out every, every so often, and that does add a cost to it. So what you're saying is, is that that will increase the operating costs, and so town meeting has to be prepared to deal with that. And the question is, are we gonna have that information in terms of how much, excuse me, how much more it will cost?
Yep. So let me just say about VRF. I don't wanna make it seem as though it's like geothermal or VRF. You know, if we wanna avoid...
It's got a combination.
We will look, we will look for something else, because we're, we've been already discussing, when we, Ray, the Building Department, Planning Department, we were really researching all-electric options, again, without any mandate. We were like, wow, this VRF, no one's using it really widely on large buildings. And there are some safety concerns, there are some maintenance concerns.
And there are environmental concerns as well, correct?
And there are, because it will be phased down in 2024. So our strategy was like, well, wait a minute, can we do better? Is there another way? So we've already been getting more information from another MET, which is Mechanical Electrical Plumbing Professional that we work with. We're already looking at other, other options. So I guess my point is, we, we feel that there will be some kind of engineering solution, but we're not sure if there, if there is any opportunity for, or, because there are always surprises, if there is a juncture where there's going to be some value engineering, where is the commitment to the construction, operating, and maintaining of these buildings? Because those are really unknowns right, right now. Some of those are unknowns, and we just wanna properly scope them out, so that, you know, we can, again, implement successfully.
So I think the chair articulated what I took away from last week's vote pretty eloquently. I'll just add that one thing that I heard was that this board is willing to pay a premium, to some extent, to go fossil-fuel-free. And, and my hesitation about making a firm commitment today that, that the Driscoll School or the Baldwin School potentially are going to be fossil-fuel-free is, I'm not really sure what I'm agreeing to. And, and that, that means in terms of cost, but also, to pick up on something that Ms. Morelli just said, I'm not sure what technology we're actually talking about. And it seems to me, the more people I talk to, the more I'm hearing things that don't align. So Ms. Morelli just mentioned that, that there aren't a whole lot of other projects that are using VRF on a large scale for a building. Well, I hear from other people that, oh, sure, VRF can handle 100,000-plus square feet. I hear that VRF is, is being phased out in 2024, and that's because there's some safety concerns about it.
The refrigerant, the refrigerant, yeah.
And then others are telling me, oh, well, you know, the greatest concern is, is if there is a leak, or, or some of the refrigerant does get out, it just, it sets you back one year on a 10-year climate change goal. So I am not an engineer, I don't know what the answers are. I just feel like I'm on a little bit of slippery ground here, not knowing what the facts are, and not necessarily knowing what the path towards, towards fossil-fuel-free is, and whether, in the end, it's something I wanna agree to. Again, I am willing to pay a premium if we can find a way to make these two buildings potentially fossil-fuel-free. I am all for it. I just, I wanna go through process, which in many ways is the Brookline tradition. We, we like to have a process for everything, and I, I see no reason why this decision shouldn't go through the same reasoned and thorough process that everything else does, including the conversation about whether to construct a new school and where it should go.
And, and Mr. Franco, if I may also just respond to your, your mandate for a process, remember that, I think it was an earlier report that we gave you, staff is committed to proceeding with that framework analysis, and also any amendments to building commission bylaw, which is the process, you know, that's, that we have, to show that there is a way that we can apply what we've learned on the Brookline High School project for a process to explore fossil-fuel-free that will enable all stakeholders at the table, and probably will ensure greater success, because anyone who has concerns, there is going to be a forum for addressing them. And I think that you will see an outcome that everyone can support. I think if people are going to hold back, it's because they have fear of the unknown. We're used to addressing anyone's constituents' concerns, and we're prepared to do that, and that's, that's why we would advocate for process. The timeline would be, we would be doing that, we were hoping to do that for spring town meeting.
So, what, yeah?
Yeah, can I, in the advisory committee motion, can I confirm that when you say "building systems," you're really talking about HVAC systems? Or is, or does building systems include more than that?
I think that it's probably good to just look holistically at just building systems in general.
So, one of the, one of the, excuse me, one of the concerns that came up was question, does this preclude the use of gas kitchens, you know, kitchen equipment? I would hope not.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, I mean, there are electric commercial stoves, but...
Yeah, have you ever tried cooking on, I don't like cooking on electric.
I mean, it's all right for us, as, as just, you know, individuals, but commercially, I'm not sure, maybe just requires some education.
So we, we are looking at, I'm sorry, apologize.
But let me just add one other thing. The other thing that is a little more troubling is science labs.
Yeah.
What are we precluding our kids from learning in science labs by?
Right.
If, if building systems include, for example, natural gas flowing into butts and burners?
Yes, and that's a very practical issue. That's one of the reasons why the STEM addition has a very high EUI, or energy use intensity, of 67. It doesn't meet the resolution's range of 25 to 30, as the Cypress building does. We, on the Brooklyn High School project, we are looking at induction for the kitchens, to see if we could lower our EUI even further. But there, even though there is some talk at universities about how to deal with labs, I don't think we have, we've, we've explored that for, for Brookline High School, so we would be depending on gas for the, the science labs.
So the question is, should we, instead of using the word "building systems," I mean, this is not our motion, but just saying, you know, you really talk about what we're really concerned with, and that is HVAC systems?
No, I think that if you have just concerns about, you know, the science labs, you might wanna call that, call that out.
I don't know what else there is.
Well, you know, I just have a little concern about cherry-picking, again. I think I'd like to do this in a way that's comprehensive without...
See, the, the, the thing about, if, if we... See, the, the, the thing about, if, if we, if we say we're not willing to reconsider, so that means the motion as suggests, as, as advisory is suggesting, is what would go to the floor. So that, but if we want to give town meeting the option of a unrestricted motion, then we can't really tinker with the advisory committee language. So that's, so do we play, or don't we?
Well, yeah. Point, I'll take it. But, you know, I think this is an issue we should think about. What does building systems mean?
Well, I, I take it not, I take it not to mean kitchen equipment or science labs.
That's how I would take it, too.
And I think we should, I think we should state that explicitly. I don't think anyone intends that, though the, the proponent isn't here, so we, we don't, though I, my guess, I hate to put words in her mouth, but I, I've never heard anyone speak against the kitchen or science labs, so.
Well, maybe as Bernard suggests, our, our language should include, you know, fossil fuel free HVAC systems. And I think that if the price tag of the operation of those is higher, then town meeting, you know, will have to deal with that in terms of appropriation ongoing. And because, you know, if we find out it's a million dollars more, I'm just making numbers up out of poke off now. But, you know, and we haven't budgeted for that, where are we going to get it? And, you know, so.
Well, it's, whatever, whatever the cost this comes in at, we don't know yet what the budget is. We have order of magnitude ranges. So we know that this is going, we, we have an estimate, like with Driscoll, adding a VRF, for example, adds, I want to say between $1 and $2 million, somewhere in that magnitude.
Well, but that, that's just the adding of-
That's the capital, right.
I'm talking about the operating expense.
Right.
And, you know-
Which could be lower, could be higher.
It could be lower if, if the cost for the electricity is lower than the cost for the gas system.
Well, I think what we saw, we saw in the Brookline High School project, that the VRF had higher lifecycle costs. I think we couldn't look at geothermal, because we couldn't accommodate it on the Brooklyn High School site. A rule of thumb, I think, was that the initial costs are higher for geothermal, but lifecycle costs are lower because of the steep energy efficiencies.
So I wonder if geothermal is a option at Driscoll?
I believe this is not, again, this is an assumption. We haven't done any drilling. We have to drill the borings.
Well, what's interesting, though, with Driscoll, is where the field is going to be, currently has a building that's going to exist while we are constructing, and is going to be there until the building is open, because that's where the kids are going to be. So we're not going to have an open field to, to drill. And we're going to need a, we're going to need a heating system before we have the field. So we may not have the space for geothermal.
I think that's what Jonathan Levy was, was saying about Driscoll, that we, we didn't have the space. But could we, is it possible to adapt the building after the fact? Again, I-
Way out of my league.
I don't know the answer.
We also haven't explored if there's any possibility to have it below the building. I, I think that's a newer application, but it's just something to put out there. I think the important thing is to not debate it, and just cut off the possibilities, but to ask the right questions. And I, one thing I was a little concerned about with Mr. Levy's slides, he looked at two options for Baldwin. That was one option with VRF, and the other option with VRF, you're not limited to that. And I would want a sustainability consultant, who's an engineer, and the MEP on a project, also to do a little bit more creative thinking about the options. So Ray and I are both on the same page regarding any all-electric option shouldn't be just limited to VRF, because there are other possibilities.
And VRF is variable refrigerated-
Yes, refrigerant flow.
Flow. Learning more about this stuff than I ever wanted to know.
Yeah, but I, I guess I didn't see that VRF was necessarily a part of either of those options, the all-electric options.
Well, in Mr. Levy's slides, I believe he said option one, option two, or, in your summary, option one, VRF, and then there was a different combination for the renewables, and then option two, VRF, with another green power component, if I, so I just, I just wanted to say, be careful about being limited. That was probably the very back of the envelope. We would push, we would push that envelope.
So I'll tell you, it's, it's by sense, given what I heard last night, and what we saw in town meeting last month, that a motion of this sort will be very popular. So do we want to give town meeting the option? So I guess the question is, do we want to reconsider? Or, and adopt the advisory committee motion, or tinker with it a little bit, or go into town meeting with a, with a unrestricted, unrestricted appropriation language with a policy commitment? And I will say that the policy, I tried to state the policy commitment last night, and that hit like a lead balloon.
I mean, unfortunately, when we get to town meeting, you're going to have the same type of, I don't want to use a certain phrase, but same type of, you know, following along behind, you know, the most emotional approach that you had at the advisory committee. So we're going to lose that if we try to nuance it and, and, you know, deal with realities.
Well, I mean, the truth is that we all want it to be fossil fuel free. So the question is, how do we get there? And this language, um-
Ms. Morelli's memo has the language. It, it's very restrictive, which was the intent.
Well, this is, it's tough. It's very difficult. Maybe what we should do is work on a very short, we can't obviously do it tonight at the table, but we could meet before town meeting, and in the meantime, work on a very short motion.
I have a feeling if, if it, if it deviates mu, if it deviates much from this, moderator's not going to allow it.
I think practically, the two choices between us are to stick with what we voted already, or to come in line with the advisory committee. I think anything beyond that may or may not be accepted, but also, it's, it's going to be overly complex. And I think we're going to lose people in, in just not making a clear, decisive statement.
I'm just worried that our, our statement, which I stand behind, is, is also on the more complex side.
I, I understand.
Right. Our, our statement of policy was described by one advisory committee member having glanced at it, saying, it says nothing. Now, it was, I'm sure the, the member read it very quickly, and it had a lot of flowery language, as some, some of these things do. I, I disagree with the categorization. It says nothing, but that was one person's opinion. But I think it's, it's, it's reflective of a point of view. So do, so what say you? Got to move on. Do we, do we, is there, is there an appetite to reconsider?
I would.
Well, I think I'm probably in the minority, but reconsider our policy statement, just because I think it is more complex. And I was hoping we could come up with something simpler. And-
Well, that wouldn't be-
In addition, there's no funding to use for the design of non-emergency fossil fuel-operated building systems, and that, but that funding, that the schematic investigation shall include the enumeration of costs associated with-
But I don't think we need that. We're going to do that anyway. There's nothing in here that precludes costing it out, or even comparing it, if that's what we, it's just we can't design it.
All right. I don't have an answer for the conundrum. I really don't. I'm sorry. I wish I did.
So-
But I think it's, I think it's, it is very complex, and that, you know, we're going to need to, if we, if we can compare the costs-
Or someone said last night, if we can't use it, why do we even, why are we wasting our time by comparing it? I don't know if I buy that, but that's a-
I think what Ms. Morelli said in response to that is that, you know, we, we have to show who, someone, that we- Pardon?
Voters.
Well, yeah, voters, too, that, that we've actually done the analysis, and, and are saying that an electric building is, is better for these reasons, and not just because we like the idea, or-
But there's nothing that precludes that analysis. We just can't design the system for non-fossil fuel.
Right.
That's the, that's the only prohibition. We just can't design it. So, is there, is anyone willing to make a motion? If not, we'll move on.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Doggett, I'm sorry. Though the, this discussion at advisory was an hour, so here it was 35 minutes. We, we beat advisory. Waste some time. Okay, so while we were playing to an empty room a week ago, you guys were playing to a full room, and-
And video cameras.
Right. And video cameras, which-
Private video.
So there is a motion that the advisory committee has, do, do we have the motion? 12-1. Okay, and we, and we have the handout that, okay, there we go. So the substitute motion that advisory has adopted, that the town released for expenditure, $1.5 million appropriated, appropriated, blah, 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 for schematic design services.
I think this is the, the other motion that Ms. Jonas did.
It's this one, from Melissa.
Yeah, but it doesn't have a-
There's only the motion, motion, that's the problem.
Do you have your motion?
I have a motion here.
Is there a motion?
There is a motion.
There is one, that's for sure. Sandy approved it.
It would be in the combined report.
Oh, I'll get it in a second.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have a copy of it.
Would it be in the combined report?
Yeah.
So should the missing motion.
Um, can I just, you can leave that there. You should have an email in your packet from Sean Lynn Jones to me, which outlines the activity of the advisory committee.
Yeah, but it just says, last night, they failed to reconsider.
Yeah, the, the Doggett motion is the advisory committee's main motion.
Right. So the question is-
What is that?
What is the, what is the Doggett?
Well, you also should have, so it is in the combined reports, so that, I'm sorry.
You know where?
Could you just read it?
Talk about being prepared, right?
That the town reappropriate and release for expenditure, the $1.5 million appropriated under Section 13, Special Appropriation Number 65, of Article 7 of the 2018 Annual Town Meeting, as provided in said appropriation, for plans to address and remediate substandard pedagogical and commons spaces in the Baker, Heath, Lawrence, Lincoln, and Runcle Schools. Such plans to be consistent with the goal of maintaining Brookline's neighborhood schools. So this is found on page 2-60 of your report.
Right. So it specifically said, it can only be used for Baker, Heath, Lawrence, Runcle, Lincoln.
That's correct.
And only on those sites. So if, for example, a new site appeared, we couldn't use any of this money to study the, a new site, because there's been rumors, spread by some, of, of potential new sites, which I think are unicorns at this point, but anyway.
As it's written, it certainly would seem to me to preclude that.
Right. And it hit me.
Was that your intent?
My intent was to deal or address the problems of the schools that were basically not going to get any attention for four, five, or six years, which are the schools listed, and that Baldwin may provide some relief for, maybe, in some, you know, that distant timeframe. So my intent was to, to basically address the problem now, I'm going to say, obviously now is probably an 18-month to two-year proposition, if we move fast, which we have done in the past. Maybe two years, but, so the intent was-
Wait, wait, to-
To help, to help address the, there's been, as you know, Nancy, the outcry that has been, at least I'm getting it, as a, as a town meeting member, about the substandard conditions and the overcrowding, is now the main focus, and this is the focus of this amendment. The original focus, if I could just kind of take us back to the summer, June, the June meeting, which was in here, where the ad hoc committee was advising the select board and the school committee, we were all at that time, in fact, I've got a sheet of paper here, which is the, the graph, which you can see the upturn. We were expecting, we were told, probably in the next couple of years, up to 400 students, and we needed a common, this is new influx. And basically, that was the decision, which I think we all made, but certainly from- And basically, that was the decision, which I think we all made, but certainly for myself, that was an important part, that we needed to have capacity. I thought, at that time, two sections in the north, two section being nine classrooms, and one in the south, three sections, which is that 400 number there. And I was convinced of that, because the school department put that data together, and there are other issues, of course, but subsequently, we discovered, and I think on 27th November, fairly recently, two weeks ago, the school department, at our request, because we pointed a number of what we thought were errors in their methodology, not their methodology, their calculation, some math errors frankly, and some out-of-date data that needed attention. And so, Mariana Bregger, myself, with the help of Dave Geishock, who put some of the numbers together for fact first notice this problem, we put together a paper, which we wanted to have a discussion to get, to see if we were right. I mean, we were convinced we were right, but obviously, when you're dealing with these complex situations, you want to make sure. We wanted to have a meeting with the school department. It didn't happen. We had, in the advisory, I asked for a reconvening of the ad hoc subcommittee, of the advisory committee, which hadn't met for, since, I think, the summer, to consider this, to consider our requirements, our findings, which we had published. And Superintendent Bott attended the meeting, and much to our surprise, not only agreed with our findings, but actually, our findings were more, they were more conservative than ours, and so in other words, I think you may have in your packet a slide that looks like this, I think it's, it's one of the slide illustrations. I could put it up on the screen if you wanted to, but basically, all I can say, I don't know if you can see it from here, or there, sorry, but this, this red line is the mapping or graphing of the data that the school department revised and put up. And as you can see, that line does not go up, it goes flat to down significantly over the next, forecast over the next eight years. This, to us, was a revelation, and what it says, what it said to me, and hence, this is the genesis of this amendment, is that we do not have an enrollment crisis, which is what I thought was the case in the summer, and I think we all thought that.
But we have all these children in substandard spaces. I'm sorry.
Let him finish.
Absolutely, you're absolutely right.
Is that not a crisis?
Well, it's a different kind of crisis, and the idea that we have to build more classrooms, in fact, I think at the time, I think it was 15 to 30 was the estimate in the, in this, you know, the ninth school final report here that I have. We don't need 15 to 30 to accommodate new, the influx of new students. We have to, I believe, and I think you would agree, we have to address the question of overcrowding, which is caused by a number of different things, it's caused by facilities. Everybody uses the example of the Lawrence cafeteria, that that's an area where the cafeteria seats 138 in a school that has 706 students. I mean, that's overcrowded for the cafeteria, I would submit. That has a different problem, different solution than adding classrooms to accommodate influx of new students. The solution for that is to fix the cafeteria, i.e., extend the cafeteria, because if you do the math on that, just one example, 706, it's 138 seats, I think it's 291 students have to be taken out of Lawrence School, have to be redistributed, to enable to downsize it just to fit the cafeteria. Now, we wouldn't do that, because 291 students is a huge number of students to put into the rest of the system, which is already overcrowded. So, the question is, can we solve that problem? If that was the only problem of overcrowding, which it is clearly not, but if that was, then we would solve it by making the cafeteria bigger. So in other words, what comes to, what came to us, certainly myself, is that we need, I believe, Baldwin, the solution Baldwin does not address these issues in these schools to a large extent. It may provide some capacity overall, and certainly Baker would be probably more affected or benefited by having that capacity close by, because in order to get relief for, let's say, downstream, if you will, or upstream, if you're looking at Brookline from north, south to north, to get those students to come in to Baldwin, to fill in those empty seats that we, the first day of school, we've got to fill, where are they going to come from? They've got to come from cascade redistricting. And many people have done, many, out there anyway, because the school department has not frankly convinced anyone that there is a strong or good plan for that, and there's a lot of concern and nervousness about that fact alone. I mean, I've heard it so many times, about particularly in the Heath-
Isn't it kind of early to be doing that?
Excuse me?
Wouldn't it be kind of early to be doing that?
Well-
I mean, we're basically speculating as to what it is we would have to do in terms of redistricting plan.
It is, Bernard, it is a complex problem. I understand that, and I understand how the school department take, I think they claimed three years, to do redistricting in a very proper way, in which is a policy-driven way. What folk are looking out there for? And I remember, this was the previous Baldwin incarnation, which I guess is two years ago, asking at that time to Mary Ellen Dunn, in a Heath, a community setting meeting, where it was being, plans were being presented, "What is the plan for redistricting?" And there is, the answer was, "Well, it's too complicated, it's going to take three years." And so the question then arose, at that time even, "Well, how are you doing the traffic analysis if you don't know where the kids are coming from? If they're coming from South Brookline, if they're coming from, let's say, the South Brookline area, the Bakerham area, that's a different problem than if they're coming up from Route 9, from other schools or other areas." So, it, there is a need out to, when the Baldwin plan is put on, that, put to the, to all the groups that I've been encountering, that there is no solid plan of how we're going to fill it. So there's naturally, in the community, tremendous amount of fear, particularly in Precinct 13, which is because obviously where Baldwin is not very far away from Heath, it's across Route 9, and maybe half a mile or so away. So, there's, I've received, I don't know, 40, 50 letters about this problem, that, one of many, and traffic and so on and so forth, but knowing how, what the plan is to fill this capacity, which we thought we needed then, which we don't need from a new student point of view, can we, so that's the concern.
Clearly students in that area, though.
Excuse me?
They're clearly students within a half-mile, for example, radius of Baldwin.
Well, when-
And many of them are on the bus going to Heath.
There are-
Other schools, I've got some go to Lincoln, some go to Runcle.
Runcle, yeah, indeed, indeed. But the feeling is that if you start redistricting Heath, which you have to do, to fill Baldwin, you're going to take students from Heath and Baker, some will come across from Route 9, there is a fear, because nobody knows, no one's telling them, that it comes from this side of Route 9, which is, let's see, it's the north side, it's very confusing the geography, but essentially, the Precinct 13 side of Route 9, if I could put it that way. And so, these fears may be, logically, if the plan was clear and presented properly, perhaps these fears could be allayed, but that's not happened. So there is a real concern in the community about that. And then, the challenge is keeping our-
Concern about what? What is this biggest fear?
This redistricting, or what we call cascade redistricting, that is, we move 200 or 100, whatever it is, students from Heath to Baldwin, and then you have to backfill Heath. So you take students out of Runcle or Driscoll, and you move them into Heath, and then you backfill, and you keep, this is what's called cascade redistricting.
So what is the fear?
Well, first of all, that's quite a disruptive, I mean, you're talking about hundreds of kids, that basically is a very disruptive-
I mean, it's adjustment of buffer zones, and I think, although I'm not really sure, I think the policy is that if kids are in a school now, they won't be, they'll stay, and you'll begin the cascading as new kids come into the school system.
Well, that's fine, but then that means that Baldwin is going to remain empty until in that situation.
Well, but John, there are other things you can do. For instance, you could have school choice, and there are lots of parents probably who would like to go to Baldwin, because the projected time is going to be earlier, and they need to get to work. And, you know, I know parents who live within a half-mile of a school now, who drive their kids, because they have to get to work.
Indeed.
And so, you know, it's no different, but we know that we have, look, we know that we have 500 children, too many in our school right now, in our schools as a whole, and that is including the fact that we don't have quite as many as capacity at Devotion, excuse me, Coolidge Corner School, and that Heath is a little bit under, and there's one other school that's a little bit under. So, we already know, and, but if you take those negative numbers and add the positive numbers of all the kids over capacity in our schools, we know that there are 500 of them. And that was, and then by capacity, I mean, the number of kids that the school was designed for. So, we know that 500 kids are, is too many. We can't handle it. And we have not been able to handle it. What we've done is we've looked at all the schools that you mentioned, we've looked at every single one of them, we have carved spaces out of janitorial closets, and we even heard of a situation where a space was carved out of a former bathroom, the toilet was removed. One of the reasons that the burden of this is falling more heavily on our special needs children is because they need to be in classes that are smaller. And so, I saw this at Lincoln myself. Last week, I went to Lincoln, at the end of a corridor in Lincoln. We've blocked off the end of a corridor, and there is a classroom, and the classes are very small, the desks are smooshed together, there can't be many children, there's barely room for the teacher to move. This situation is not, is not right. We can do better than this. We owe it to our children to do better than this. So what you're suggesting is that we modify these five schools, three of which are landlocked. So, there are only a couple of ways that you can modify a school. You can go up, and we can't go up in any of our schools. People have asked me about that, I want to make that clear, because we have wood-framed buildings, and they will not support a second or a third or a fourth or a fifth floor. We have already carved out all the spaces we can possibly carve out in our schools. We know that, we've taken the janitorial closets and the bathrooms and the hallways, et cetera. We know that. And we also know that all of our schools have lunches that are starting at ridiculous hours, and there's not enough gym space, and there's not enough auditorium space, and there's not enough library space. Now, in a couple of the schools, in Lawrence, for instance, you recommended that we build onto the one end of it. Is that not correct?
May I, um-
Is that correct?
I said it's a possibility.
It's a possibility.
It's not a possibility.
Well, it's actually not a possibility, John, because a number of years ago, we looked at that, we, we looked at, we looked at that issue-
Let's just have a meeting.
We looked at that issue, and the, there was vociferous opposition from the open space community about the fact that we may extend onto Article 97 land, so that-
Okay. Nancy, I'd like to answer all of your questions, but there's a ton of them there, if I may say so. Is there a possibility I can get some slides up here, because frankly, I need, I need to answer some of your questions with slides. I can't, if you haven't read the material or haven't got it in front of you, then it's easier for me to do that. Oh, thank you very much. I just want to get the file to this. Put it off this drive. This is the PowerPoint. Yeah, yeah. Okay. I want to go back to the enrollment, just a second, just to set the scene, because this is, this is important. This is the figures that were coming out, this is the report from the enrollment projection report of the last one that was issued earlier this year, in April of this year, and I'm just plotting these numbers, just pointing out that these are the numbers on that chart, which is the one I was showing you just now. So this is going to give you a sense, because I say this because I've been, people have said, "Well, they're your numbers." These are not my numbers, these are the school department's numbers. So, let's go to the next one, which is, the school department also is, on November 27th, Superintendent Bott presented us with the revised numbers, and these are them on this page out of here, and I plotted them, because the, unfortunately, in that presentation, there was no plot of the numbers. And so we plotted them on the chart here, this red line is the enrollment projection. So what does that mean? Okay, so we basically had, when we were sitting in this room in June, this was the number that we were looking at. We should have been looking at this number. This is the actual number, as now revised by the school department. It's a significant, Nancy, it's a significant difference, it's a 400-student difference. That's a big number. And so, with that number going down, what does that mean in terms of capacity, which is kind of, I want to get to the overcrowding issue, which is a problem. I'm absolutely, we're absolutely 100% agreement about that. So here we have capacity, this is again, this number comes out of the, there's a lot of discussion about what capacity is and so forth, and I'm not going to get into that discussion for this, except to say that this number comes out of the enrollment report, the same EPRL report, and what it represents is the current capacity of the system. It's about, I can't remember, this is 5,000, it's 5,500 roughly, 5503 or whatever, it's actually four, five, I can't remember the actual number. And so I plotted those two lines, if I just go back a second, those are the lines, the one up here and the one down here is being plotted. So the green line is the incorrect, or the one that created incorrect error that was produced, I feel personally that we made a decision on, I feel I would have made a completely different decision, had I known this data on this red line was in play. The red line, as you can see, that nothing's going to happen, this is, this is where we are today, this is where, we've got here, we've got the capacity of, the current capacity in the system, and we've got the Driscoll capacity going in there, that orange, and the pink is the Baldwin capacity. And here, at the time I made the chart, we've got no idea when Pierce is going to come online, the gold, so it's been put at FY '28. That could be earlier, that could come in earlier with the MSBA partnership, I guess we're waiting to hear tomorrow, I think, is the good news. So, basically, you can see this red line, within our existing capacity, it's enough capacity to get our, all our kids are seated today, but we have this overcrowding problem. And so, we need to address that, but we don't need, if this, if this line holds over time, this is the school department's current forecast, it means that we're going to get a naturally declining number of students per, in various different areas. It may not be even across the system, which is always a challenge, but nonetheless-
And the operable words are-
Nancy, let him finish.
If it holds. We have, we don't really know.
Well, it's pretty good, the birth rate has been, which is one factor, it's not the only factor, that we people move in and out of town and so forth, there are other factors. The birth rate's been dropping since 2012, it's dropped 22%. I mean, and that's a fundamental, that's a core, core factor. The churn rate, somebody has observed, 21% of the under-fives, I think it is, are come in, are parents who are international. International is dropping for various reasons, governmental policies and this nature, for various reasons, that may be dropping. Other factors are going the other way, conversions of property, the 40Bs and so on and so forth, so that's, that's all in the play. These numbers include housing projections, that this is, that the school department put forward. But again, this, there's probably a cone in here, maybe the line is flatter, but the fact is, I believe, that we have, we have not the enrollment, the new enrollment crisis, that's not, so, that we are faced, that we are faced with in the summer. It now seems that we have a different crisis, we have an overcrowding crisis. And here we have, we've got four years before this comes online, and when it does, we've got Driscoll, which would help backstop any kind of problem, you've got one section going into Driscoll, that's 200, 189 students, that's the number. I was just looking, when you were adding up the numbers, Nancy, I just looking, that the current, you know, the current under-capacity is Coolidge, Heath, and Runcle, and we've got 130- That we've got now 189 potentially new capacity coming in with Driscoll.
How much is the overcapacity, Nancy?
And then you've got Pierce. I don't know, there's another 189 maybe coming in from Pierce, another section. We don't know what that's going to hold yet. But it sounds like there's enough capacity coming online, plus the natural decline in enrollment, which we can see on these charts here, the latest, we just take Heath, for example, down from 551 down to 522. Baker, down from 794 to 762. There is a trend going down, that whether it'll hold, we don't know. But we do have time, because those, any, any 40Bs or all those kinds of things are not going to come online. I mean, Hancock Village has been taken several years, and we still haven't got there yet. So, we believe that there is enough time to look at this four-year period. Can we do a better job, is what the, this amendment is about, for existing schools? Now, if I can get on to ask you, ask you questions on that...
Well, let me just ask you one more question.
Okay.
All right. This year, we know that we have 120 more K to 8 students in the system than we did last year.
I can't do the math that fast. I've got the, let me see, K, we've got 603 this year, and I've got 615, say, well, there's 615 first graders. So, I guess there were K last year, so I, I don't know if that's...
I'm talking about K to 8. We have kids, we have kids coming in at every, every level, every year.
Yep.
We have 120 more kids this year. That's my understanding.
120 more kids, what's that?
In the system. I don't know the breakout of where they are.
Well, we've got 600, according to this, is the, the, the number. We've got, across the system, K through 8, we've got 5,503 this year, and 5482 last year. So, that's 8, 18, 21, I mean, it's 21 kids extra. That's what, that's what...
Well, we can check this number out with Superintendent Bot, but I believe that, that that is the accurate number.
I'm reading off the chart.
But I don't see where that is reflected on your chart.
That's all, that's my concern.
Well, it's reflected in that blue bar. That, that's the current 5503.
But you're acting as if that current bar in fiscal year 19 is our capacity. It's not our capacity.
No, it needs to be lower. I mean, I agree with you. Yeah.
It needs to be lower.
Yeah, let's, let's move on. We agree. So, let's move on. I want to...
Wait, doesn't that impact your analysis?
Sorry?
Doesn't that impact your analysis if, if the capacity is lower than your bars?
No, the, no, the capacity is, that, that is the current capacity, as specified by the, the report. I'm saying, we, we're trying to get at this overcrowding...
The current enrollment, it's not necessarily the current capacity.
Yes, exactly.
Current enrollment is not current capacity.
Well, and there's no definition of capacity. That's the problem. I mean, to be quite honest, everyone has a different view, and there are different factors, and there's a good reason for that. There are different factors. Is it common space capacity? Is it classroom capacity? You know, is it gym capacity? I mean, there are all these different functions that have different needs and different, different capacity impacts. Again, I don't, I don't want to come back to Lawrence, but that is one of them.
Well, John, when a school is built, it's built for a certain number of students. And it's built, it has certain number of classrooms that will accommodate that number of students, and common spaces like cafeteria, auditorium, gym, and library that will accommodate that number of children. Once you go over that number of children, you are above your capacity. It's a simple formula.
Right. So, yes, and the simple formula is, is, the, I think Superintendent Bot has identified, let's see if I have the right now, I, I don't have it immediately in front of me. But let's, I think in terms of, let me just get that number, because I think it gives us, ah, yeah. This is the, this is the facilities needs overview, which gives some sense, I think, of the capacity issue that you're talking about, Nancy. So, if I go, let me, let me take Heath as an example, because Heath, I think Heath and Baker, in this, in this proposal, represent two great opportunities to, to address the overcrowding in those two schools. Okay? The, the other schools, Lawrence is next, and we can talk about that, and you, you raised an interesting point about Lawrence. And I think there is maybe an opportunity. I'm not, if I was taking odds, maybe it's a 5% chance, maybe it's a 10% chance, whereas Heath and Baker is at 100%. I mean, I think there's, and that, the reason is the land. Lincoln and, and Runcle are, have got that problem. But we can, we can go through each of them if you would.
The problem of being landlocked, and so you have to take houses by eminent domain?
No, I disagree. But that's, I don't believe in eminent domain for this purpose. Let me just, to, to take a look at Heath for a second, if I may, just looking at Superintendent's numbers. And this is a great, this is a great report. The deficit in Heath, which is, represents an overcrowding factor. They, they added up, Joe Connolly, this was, he added up all the numbers, and he came up with, for Heath, 21, 21,000 square feet short. Okay? If Heath, what he's saying is, if Heath had 21,000 square feet extra, it would not be overcrowded. It would be right-sized for the population that it's built for. So, I mean, I can go through all the, I can pick a detail, like the science labs, you know, there's 400 feet of space less and so on. I mean, we can look at each one of those components and say, "That's overcrowded," or "The auditorium is," or "The gym is," or "The cafeteria is." We can look at each of those, because all the information is here. So, the question is, okay, let's take the, let's go up a little bit, rather than down to the classroom level, and say, "We're 21,000 square feet short on Heath. What can we do with, what can we do? What does this amendment do?" Okay? So, let me go forward here. Here's Heath. Here's the aerial picture of Heath. You can recognize, this is obviously a recent picture. Either in blue here are two opportunities for expanding Heath, both of which would come to 21,000 square feet. So, in other words, we can attach on Heath, on this, the, the south building, on the end, towards the sledding hill, we can add probably 12,000 square feet. And then here, we can do the same. So, gross square footage-wise, there is an opportunity. But I would argue that actually that's probably, to take this deficit and put it there to right-size it, is not necessarily what we would want to do. And this is what the feasibility plan is all about. It's about prioritizing. Is the fact that I look here and I see, you know, the, that some of the classes are 50 feet under, under requirement, is that really seriously problematic with the declining enrollment rate? We have 16 in a class now at Heath, in kindergarten, for example. It may not be. And I think that they've all, every square foot has been added in here, and the square footage is a comparison to MSBA standards. So, that's, that's the metric by which these are being measured, as to whether they're, whether they're deficient or not. So, if we, some of those measurements here, you're going to say, I think, the, the school department would look at that and say, probably, "Well, we don't need to fix that." But what we might want to fix is the library. We might want to fix the library. Okay, the library actually is there, and could be easily extended. I hadn't put that in, but this could be easily extended to take care of the library, if you so wish. But I think there's a much more important point for Heath. And Heath is becoming, in my mind, critical to the system, the way we look at it. The, the opportunity for putting RISE in this location, and helping Runcle by removing, either removing it completely, or certainly halving the program, which is the intention of Baldwin, one of the pluses on Baldwin, is to move it into Heath. I mean, and because if we've got space here, let's say there's 12,000 square feet, that could be custom-designed for a RISE program. And you'd be able to move, you'd be able to give Runcle some relief, which we know is, they're going to be difficult to give any relief to, and, and basically help out Baldwin, two years before Baldwin even comes online, if it comes online, if lawsuits don't delay it. So, and I think ELL and BEEP are, all those pluses in Baldwin are great candidates for Heath space. And talking with some parents around Heath, they'd love to have them. I mean, you've got a community that is initially responding and saying, "We don't want Baldwin, but we'd love to have them at Heath." Why not take advantage of it? So, this is what this amendment is about. And I can, I'll go to, so, I dealt enough with Heath, and I think that Heath has that very important role. It's, it's, it's an important piece of the jigsaw puzzle, because it truly is a complex problem. I, I didn't know much about this until we started down this road in, in the summer, frankly, or after the summer, in the fall. And I, I'm amazed at what there is and what, what the, what the school department has done. I mean, they've done a tremendous job, as you say. They've got classrooms in closets. That's got to stop. We've got to pull them out. And I think we can at Heath. We can do that. Okay, so on to Baker. What have we got at Baker? Baker's got real problems. Let me come up to this chart here. Okay, you can say, "What the hell's this chart?" This is Baker, I can't even read it, Lawrence, Runcle, Heath, and this is a classroom inventory of all the classes in those schools. Yellow and green is basically good. Green means it's above, at or above standard, that's MSBA standard, in terms of square footage now, we're talking about classrooms. Yellow is average or close to standard. Orange, down here, and red, a couple of red dotted around, is substandard. So, for example, I think Heath has no toilet, that's, that's red. It has no toilet in the kindergarten rooms. Well, that, could that be fixed? Maybe, I don't know. It seems to me a small project that could get done, provide some relief for the kindergartens there. But look at this here in, in Baker. Those are all substandard classrooms. And that's what I think the opportunity is, and that's what's causing overcrowding in many ways. They've been crammed into spaces, I think the L-shaped room is here, the modulas, here they are. I mean, that's what the problem, I think, is. And so, here's, if I can go up, oops, going back this wrong way. So, we got, went to Heath, we're going to Baker now. There is an opportunity in Baker, there's ton, actually, there's tons of opportunity. I know all the difficulties of building on here, and Town Council told me, there's absolutely no difficulty, in her mind, of building anywhere on that, on that, on that campus. But I'm suggesting, here we have the modulas, right here.
Except the political difficulty.
There's always political difficulty.
And the wetlands difficulty. The wetlands. How about the wetlands and the tree grove?
I think this is not in the wetlands area.
Playground.
This is the existing building here, Nancy. This is the, it's a kind of U-shaped building. This is the, you know, the main school department, the main school area here. I don't, I don't know Baker that well, but I, I was walking around it today, because I believe on putting feet on the ground when I'm looking at things. And I see, this area here is probably a two-story building, 21,000 square feet here for, for Baker. I think their total deficit is, let me get the numbers right, because someone will get me. If I don't, Baker, Baker's Baker, Baker is, total deficit in Baker is 18,000 square feet. So, we're looking for 18,000 square feet. I think that building is approximately, as far as I could measure it, about 21, 22,000, if it's a two-story building. And it goes over the portables, which we want taken out. So, there is an opportunity. Again, Neil, you're absolutely right. Political, do, do people want their schools fixed, or don't they? Here's a great opportunity to say, "Look, we're not impinging on wetlands, we're not impinging on this place space, that this area here is really paths, and it's a bit of grass, it's a little bit of open space, but it looks like, when I was there, all the kids were playing up in this area here. They were just going to and fro, it's a transit area." It seems like ideally a perfect area in which to put a, a building, and take out those horrible portables that are there, and, and build it, attach it to that little gym. And maybe you take the gym out as well, if you were there, because they're short of gym space.
And you're going to do this for $8 million?
Excuse me?
If I read your chart correctly, you're doing this for $8 million? You must, John, I'm glad to know you're such a dreamer.
No, I, I'm not a dreamer.
Come on, that, that...
I, I believe in the future, and I believe in the kids, and I believe that we can do a good job. And I believe that the focus has been on building brand-new schools, which is great, if you can find a place to build them. As you know, that's caused tremendous, the Baldwin situation's caused tremendous problems legally and from the community standpoint. What I'm looking for, what I would like to see, is a, the community that embraces that they want to expand their schools. And I, I would love to be in a situation where people are loving to have Baldwin in their neighborhood, but it's not going to happen, I don't think. So, I was looking for an alternative to say, "I don't want an in-town meeting, personally. I do not want to vote no on Baldwin." This is my effort to say, "I think we can do something which is actually just as good in the short term, not in the long term." The long term, it allows us to step back, and maybe that site comes into fruition, Neil. I, I don't know. If it doesn't, I, this does not preclude Baldwin coming back on the table. Does not. Next, next town meeting, you could, if you find $1.5 million or whatever it is required, that could be done, if, if necessary. I, I think that, given the amount of angst that there is on this project, I would, I'd hope that wouldn't happen, but it, it could. It could be that, that the, the numbers suddenly start going up. But we've got plenty of time to react. And I think that if there was a good case made, even on the Baldwin side, if they could solve the traffic problem, and maybe that's solved through a, a pedagogy issue, a STEM school, or something like that. But that's, these ideas are suddenly coming out of the woodwork, and I think that, no, yeah. And, and they, to the people on the ground, I'm talking about my constituents, and they're saying, "What's going on?" Because most people are not as connected as you and I may be in what's going on in the town. So, there is something in Baker. Let me just, I'm taking up too much of your time. Lawrence, you said that it's impossible to build. I, and, I agree, I took, I talked with Helen Chalupski, and she said to me, "John, your plan about Lawrence is insane." Okay? I think you probably...
I would agree with you.
Right. Well, that's a, to me, that's a challenge. So, I said, I said, "What's the problem with Lawrence?" She said, "Well, the open space folk have really caused a lot of issues, because it's a playground, just similar to Baldwin."
We have an LWCF grant there.
Yes, but we also have something else. I'll tell you in a second. And I, so I, I went to Precinct 3, and I got to know Mary Doitt. And Mary and I walked around that school. And I've been in it with the principal as well, so I've had a little bit of inside and outside, not a big tour on the inside, but, but enough to know what's kind of, I want to know what's going on. And Mary said to me, "The most important thing in the whole place on that building is the vegetable garden." Which is, unfortunately for me, for you, I'm, I'm in your proxy, I want to build a building there, and she's got a vegetable garden there, so that's, that's out. Because I don't think I'm going to be able to move a vegetable garden, looking at that. So, I'm, I go around with her, and we, we discuss the history and what went on with the, the tennis courts and the garage, and Newell Road here, and all those things. And we, I said, "Look, they've got problems in Lawrence, and we need to expand. What, what could we do, from your point of view?" "Well, I don't want you building on the open space, blah, blah, blah." And I said, "Well, what happens if we extended the basement cafeteria space under the, under the playground here? Would you have a problem with that?" "Oh, well, if it doesn't disturb the playground space, no, not at all." I said, "Well, I've talked with Town Council, and she's looking into it. She has not got back further finally, but she doesn't see intrinsically why we can't do that. It's not ideal, because you've got a, a skylight issue to address, but I think that could be addressed." But she said to me, Town Council said, "Well, Boston Common has a garage under it. So, clearly, that's a park, so clearly, you can put things under, underground," which sort of makes sense. Sometimes the law doesn't make sense, sometimes it does. Well, that's the situation.
Maybe we could have put Baldwin School under the playground.
That's what I'd do.
Yeah, I never thought of that. I don't think that's going to work.
No, but, but this is, I, I see this as a chink of light, and no more. I, I wouldn't, I, I look, I put two question marks up there on that. I just don't see, I mean, you say I'm a dreamer, well, that may even be beyond my dreams. I, but I would, I would chase it down, personally, because I think that it may be an option, it may be an option, when you look at the expense, you know, so I think I costed that at $1,000 a square foot, something like that, which is based upon an underground car parking space number, and it looks like, you know, it's a $12 million project, but it's going to be a challenge. The other thing that is possible there is indicated by HMFH when they did a study for B-Space, the Larchitect Firm. And they noted that they actually had a plan, they had two options, and here is where they ended up, they're building the, again, these were portables, I guess, and that area there...
Actually, they were intended to be portables, but portables didn't work, modular, which is different.
They don't, yeah, yeah.
And then, so it's stick-built, it's conventional.
And it's, and it's, it looks like it's the same, they've done a very nice job on the outside, and that's terrific.
But it's conventional construction.
Yeah, and that's where they ended up, over the car parking lot, I think. But over here, they had a plan, and I wondered why they had a plan, which essentially is in the playground. Well, it turns out that in 1929, the state gave the town permission to build on the playground. There's an area of 80 feet by 220 feet, and here that the town, that they say the state allowed us to build. So I asked town council, has that, has that permission been negated by LWCF? She doesn't know, she doesn't know the answer. It's probably complicated, and I said, there's no hurry, town meeting's gonna happen, or maybe this, if this, if this is voted up, then, then I'll come back, I said, and if it's voted down, well, then it's, I pass it along as an interesting piece of information, and it may not be, need to be acted on. But if that's the case, and that we could actually build on that strip of land, that's very important, as HMFH, because then you could not only improve the cafeteria down below in the basement, but actually build space up as well, which is so much needed. I mean, they need music room, they need art room, they need an extra classroom, the eighth grade classroom, which is probably earlier than this could be done, I think they need it next year, and ELE space, I mean, there's a whole number of things that they need there. And that's, again, I'm looking at five, 10, that's a, that's a low probability. I wouldn't spend an awful lot of time, but I might want to find out if we could. And then the issue is, if we could, do we want to go ahead with the neighborhood? So, in other words, we don't have lawsuits coming in to say you can't do that, even though we might have that right. So I, I think it's a very, talk about politics there, I think it's a very tricky situation. So, I don't want to spend any more time on it, because I think the opportunities are in those first two schools. Lincoln.
Well, okay.
I just, I'll just quickly finish, I don't take too long, I know. I know that Helen said we've looked in the car parking lot, well, have we, how hard have we looked? Lincoln is absolute, it's a beautiful building, by the way, it's a lovely building, and, and it's completely, as you say, Nancy, completely landlocked. So can we build there? Maybe, I don't know. I don't know what the history of that is, or how hard they looked, but it seems to me that Lincoln is very difficult to do anything for, except possibly if this property came up for sale, that could be plus about an $800,000 house, I think, that might provide some square footage if we bought it.
You're pointing to the end of the school.
Oh, sorry, that, that house there, beg your pardon, Neil, that one. This one is a rather lovely house, but would be ideal, but in the sense of Route Nine, if you really wanted to expand, and it came up on the market. But this one actually looked like it might, but that's, the feasibility study might identify that, and have a plan for that, probably not a lot of money involved in putting that on the shelf. And if that property came up, and you want to go to town meeting to buy it, instead of buying Oak Street, maybe you want to buy that one. And I think that if you had, if there was a plan on the shelf, that that would be very acceptable to town meeting, to say, yep, we can react, in 45 days, we can react to that, and you can purchase that property, so that we can get on with the Lincoln expansion, if, to solve the problem. But you, this is a very difficult problem to solve, I fully accept that. Runkel, same, same issue. The only thing about Runkel is, it does contain the RISE program, so there is some possibility to help Runkel by moving the RISE program, and I'm suggesting, don't wait for Baldwin, let's go into Heath and put it in Heath, because I think the Heath community would love to have it, and also, it's an autistic program, so Heath is a more sort of gentle, more quiet kind of environment. This is, Runkel is, you know, is still a little crowded here, and I think it would be beneficial for the kids to be in that kind of more bucolic setting, if you will. That's a personal opinion, but I think, so, that, I've taken up enough of your time.
So, I appreciate the work you've done, and your ability to articulate it. I, I'm concerned, I, I fully buy that there's room at Baker to do something, and the HMFH study that we did just, you know, this year showed that there's room to do something at Heath, so, you know, I accept that there's room to do stuff on those campuses. So, you know, we can address two of the schools, but that kind of leaves the rest of the system, and I, and I accept, okay, we're addressing that with Driscoll.
And Pierce.
And Pierce.
For Lawrence, Driscoll and Pierce.
Right.
Neil, do you have those numbers of what it would cost to do renovations?
Right, so, right, so, you know, we've seen, you know, the HMFH numbers pretty much are guts of, well, of Baker. It was, you know, varying degrees of expansion and, and very full renovations. So, you know, John is, his scope is different. I, I don't know if I buy the numbers that you have, I think your numbers are understated significantly. You know, just talking to Mr. Levy, he seems to think that the numbers are very understated, and, and then, just by putting a building, are we, are we building the right kinds of spaces, and that would have to be studied nice? And just my own experience with, with dealing with school construction, is everything is more complicated, more expensive than you expect.
May I comment just on that question from Jonathan Levy? First of all, I used his numbers. I used, we asked him for his numbers for Driscoll, which, so we did the Reno numbers, $516 a square foot, we used. We used the MSBA numbers, $400 a square foot for new construction. We recognized in the, in the page here, I think it's, find it, it's in your report handout, well, it's in the summary, I'll put the summary. There's essentially a new build, i.e. if we put in a, either at Heath or at Baker, we put in like 21,000 square feet, or whatever the square footage is, you multiply by those numbers, those are Jonathan's numbers, that's how he costs. I'm surprised that he said that to you, frankly, Neil. So you've got two costs, two costs. One is building the new space, and then you've got to retrofit the, or repurpose the old space. And that costs, actually, that's the $516 number, so it's significantly more expensive, and you've got to do both. Now, that number, that repurposing, sometimes you can take a classroom and just use it as a classroom. Sometimes it's got to be changed into something else that costs money to do that. That's what, that's where we put together the estimates, that's what we put in there. So I think that it's a pretty good number. We're looking at, and I'm surprised he said that, because he said in a meeting, in the ninth school working group in September of 2016, he said, or at least, it was reported that it was said, let me just make that correct, that right sizing Baker would cost $20 million, which is actually the kind of numbers I'm coming up with for Baker. So I think I'm right in the ballpark with Jonathan. Again, this is, this is, at the high level, is this kind of feasible, at my level, not feasible actually, the purpose of the money is to determine whether that is the case or not. That can we do these fast projects? And Ray Masick last night said, oh, you know, six months was, I think, his answer on getting to feasibility.
Feasibility, is what he said.
And I think we've seen the, you know, the committees of seven do three months, and therefore getting to three, so getting to feasibility will be quite quick, I think, according to Ray, it's quick to me, anyway. And I think that, you know, within two years, you could have a solution at Heath, which is actually producing and being valuable to the community, valuable to the, to the school system, tremendously valuable, I think, and it's a great opportunity. And yet, Baldwin may be mired in lawsuits and not coming online for five, six, or seven years.
That's true everywhere.
I don't know.
Let me ask you something. You said that Jonathan Levy estimated that it would take at least $20 million to right-size Baldwin.
He didn't say at least, he said twenty.
How many at Baker?
Yeah.
Is that what he said?
That, well, it was in the minutes, it's in the minutes of the meeting, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So what does right-size mean? Does that mean expanding it so that we can, it can accommodate additional students, or does that mean doing it to accommodate and make sure that the kids who are there now have appropriate cafeteria, appropriate gym, appropriate library, appropriate auditorium, and appropriate classrooms?
I believe, Nancy...
I believe that's what it is.
I believe that's what it is.
So it's not, there's no relief for overcrowding, which we currently have.
But that is relief. That is, I beg to differ.
No relief in the, in other schools, for what we, in terms of, in terms of the number, we have, yes, we can relieve the overcrowding at Baldwin, but how are we gonna relieve?
Baker.
I mean, I'm sorry, they both start with B.
I know, I know. I keep using the wrong names.
So, how are you, how are you going to deal with the entire system?
But it's already been dealt with. Assuming the town meeting approves Driscoll, which I'm certainly in favor of, and I hope town meeting definitely gives a thumbs up, I know this board is in favor of it, that Driscoll is gonna add a section, Pierce is gonna add a section, and we're underpopulated at Coolidge Corner, so there should be enough capacity, certainly in North Brookline, to accommodate that. Could Heath take more, when they, if someone does a study on this, could Heath take more? Yes, we know that Heath can take more, we've seen a plan by HMFH in the summer, when we went through our book here, Heath was on that. Heath could be, I, this, the amendment that I'm putting forward is not designed to increase the number of classrooms for bringing in this influx of students, of new students. What it's designed to do is to right-size the gym, the cafeteria, the, the science labs, the kindergarten rooms with their toilets, and all of those things, which are causing overcrowding.
Okay, but you've already said that it's very difficult to do at Lawrence, very difficult to do at Lincoln, and very difficult to do at Runkel.
I would say two and a half out of five ain't bad.
But it doesn't get you, it doesn't get you what you need.
But we don't solve it, but what is, what is Baldwin gonna do for Lawrence? Nothing. What is Baldwin gonna do for Heath? Not much. And those facilities, those...
Then why are people afraid of it, if it's not gonna do anything to Heath?
In terms of fixing the myriad of pictures of showing shower curtains, and, you know, we've seen it all, and that, those things are not fixed by Baldwin coming in and basically causing cascade redistricting, so we don't know where their kids are gonna come from, because there's no plan, and we don't know whether, in fact, you can actually get to that situation. How many are gonna come from Heath? How many are gonna come from Runkel? How many are gonna come from, where is the plan to show us? Okay, we're gonna take 50 kids out of here, and there's talk about an ELL program being taken out, moving from Lawrence, I guess it is, I'm not sure which one it is down there. Excuse me?
Pierce.
Pierce, thank you. Yes, Pierce, taking, I guess, the Chinese program, maybe.
Half of the Chinese program.
Yeah.
The half of it is not...
Oh, half, yeah. So, it's like, but these seem to be ideas being thrown out onto the table because of, you know, basically, the, the expansion issue has got, the influx, or let me call it the new student enrollment problem, has gone away, and now we're left with the overcrowding. So now we've got a, a building that we conceived that needs to address this problem, and it's kind of a very awkward fit. It doesn't fit, doesn't make sense to people out there. I mean, people are very confused, they're pretty much divided, as far as I can see, on the issue, so I don't know what's gonna happen on Thursday.
Part of me, and some are confused and some are not.
Yeah, that's also true. I mean, everyone's got an opinion, that's the good news.
I would also point out to you, I mean, we do have, we have an 800 student, practically, an 800 student school, we've had a drop this year of, I think, 40 students, or thereabouts. Part of the reason for that is probably that Chestnut Hill Realty has taken 40, have taken several apartments offline while they're renovated. So the question is, will those come back, you know, when those come back online, will they be rented to families with children? We have two projects, two 40B projects, the numbers vary widely as to how many kids will be there, but it seems about, the minimum I've heard is about 200. And so you're talking about a situation where you're gonna have a, an area that has got more kids than the school can handle. And even if you do this, you know, as cheaply as you project, which I have serious doubts about, you still have a problem. You know, you've got to look, we've got to look to the future, and I'm not talking about future enrollment projections, I'm talking about the future enrollment of children we know are gonna be, we have some idea are gonna be here, because of the 40Bs, because of the housing projects, we know they're gonna be here. And we have an obligation to them, to provide them with a school system that meets their needs.
When I looked at the data, first of all, the planning department said, there's memos flying backwards and forwards from the planning department to the school department, they do not use these figures in your modeling. And in fact, if you look at the enrollment report, they model with and without for that very reason, because they're highly volatile. In fact, if you look at the list on 2016, Hancock Village is coming online right now, or at least next year, 19, I mean, basically, coming up. It's not gonna happen. So, and Coolidge Corner is moving up and down from 299 to, I don't know what the current number is for the Dergan, but it, these numbers are paper numbers, I mean, you talk about unrealistic, I'm sort of forecasting, it's very difficult to forecast that. And also, we know, we know when that's gonna come online, when it's truly, truly gonna come online. It's interesting that Newton, when they do their enrollment forecasting, don't take into account any new housing development at all, until the building permit is issued. When the building permit is issued, they recognize it, because then they realize, well, we got time to react to build capacity, potentially, now maybe they have more land in Newton.
But we spent 11 years trying to make it the same.
I thought we don't begin to put those developments into the projections until a building certificate is issued. I thought that was our practice.
No, it's not. Not in terms of that enrollment projection report. That's when, when you look at the report, it says with housing or without, with new housing development, all the lines that I've showed you tonight have new housing development as the school department has accepted. Whatever the number is for Hancock, I think it's 238, something like that, that's the number that they projected from Hancock Village coming into the system. And those numbers are in that green line going down there, sorry, the red line going down there. So they, they don't seem, I, I'm going off the air here, I closed it up, but you can see, if you look at that chart, that line goes down, there's a little bump when there's kind of a, which is before Baldwin comes online, that little bump is Hancock Village, and if it's, they've assumed in their, the worst-case scenario, that all of Hancock Village is built all at the same time, and it's filled completely on that date, and that we all know that it's gonna take probably two years for those, for that project to fill up and come online. I mean, Mr. Zucker is not gonna build that amount of square footage all at one go, he's going to build in stages, and basically, and also, when he rents his buildings, he's gonna rent them in stages, they don't just get filled up overnight. So there is a, there is a time, the numbers on the chart are very conservative in that, in that sense, but in practical terms, that curve is gonna smooth out, the longer out they go, the better off we are, and we go into that, hopefully, continuing natural decline. And if we don't, then I think, I personally would be, I would be saying, well, if we've got no other choice, then pull the Baldwin plan back on, back on the, back on the docket, because we, we are now, the evidence says we need to do it. I'm willing to get a step behind that. I'm thinking in this interim, that we shouldn't do that, we should pause on that front, which is what the amendment effectively does, and to retake stock, really have a look at that plan, get on with, get fixing where we can fix, we can fix two more schools, which is a significant number of schools that we fixed, we've only got those landlocked ones left. And that's a great advance, and then maybe the compelling case is rebuilt, and maybe the numbers support it, or maybe they don't, maybe they do continue to decline, in which case, we can say, well, maybe we need a smaller school somewhere else, and maybe some land comes up for available closer to the center of population that in North Brookline typically, that we, that we still keep looking. So I see that as...
I think that's a, that's a pipe dream.
Well, it may be, that, but, but I think we, as I say, I would personally say, put Baldwin back on the table, if that's the case.
Your point, I mean, it hasn't, it hasn't come on, it hasn't appeared before us in 11 years, it's hard to believe it's gonna appear anytime soon, land to build a school.
So, I think, I think we're at a point, we're not gonna convince you, and you're not gonna convince us.
I'm disappointed.
Mr. Masick is in the audience. I was wondering if he has any observations in terms of the process of putting a plan like this in place and getting actual...
Okay.
Buildings constructed, and, you know, is, is the idea that this is a quick fix a realistic possibility?
Mr. Masick, would you...
Sorry to put you on the spot, but you are the expert. I said six months for a feasibility study, you need to re-study it, so we can get an estimate and figure out what the plan might be, if it's viable, maybe a year and a half to design it.
Then another year and a half to design it, and then two years for construction, is that correct?
It depends on the size of the project, we wanna look at it carefully. You know what we did over at the Heath six years ago, so, we put on an addition to the backside of the building, and I don't think we could add another addition where it's located there. Library's all been pushed out, there's potential maybe on the end, but to be fair, it's gonna take about a year and a half to design, and depending on the size, it could be two years or a year. The original expansion we did six years, years ago was about a year. So, in terms of the ability of the buildings that we're talking about to absorb additional space... space, is that a problem? I mean, we've already sort of intruded into hallways and other spaces. Are there spaces in the buildings that can be expanded or used to increase capacity? And we're being asked to do further expand in place. I mean, is there any place to expand is the question. On most of those buildings?
Yeah.
I guess we could all agree that there is expansion capability over at Baker, limited at Heath, and then the rest of the schools, I question that. I'm not going to say my opinion, but we've carved out the spaces we could. When you have a... I came here 20 years ago to renovate the Baker School. I believe the Baker School was set up for three sections. Right now, it's running at 700 or 800. My wife worked at the school, and I understand the problems of an overcrowded school. It's more than just expanding classrooms. I don't want to speak for the school system. I'll just speak from my wife's own observations. It's where the specialists work. It's the library. It's the music. You've heard it all before. And the kids at Baker, the cafeteria is landlocked. I know what I put there when I renovated the school originally. When you have additional kids and the same core spaces, that's what this is coming down to. It really isn't about classroom. I can't make additional space out of closets. We have carved out what we could. We had architects look at it, and we put in the walls that we could. It's a little bit bigger issue than just adding classrooms, but that's my personal opinion.
So do we -- is there any appetite on the board to reconsider? I see none, so I guess we'll go in with a giving Town Meeting the choice. There's the alternate motion. I think the way advisory did it is they accepted Mr. Doggett's motion, but then they -- there was a motion that said, well, if Mr. Doggett's motion fails, and then the selectman's motion becomes the main motion, then they wanted the ability to add the fossil fuel restriction that was in the Driscoll. So is there any appetite to add that? We didn't with Driscoll, but it'll be on the floor of Town Meeting should the Doggett or the AC motion fail. And I'm not seeing any sense to reconsider.
Well, if Baldwin is approved, I will vote for the fossil-free, fossil-fuel-free -- sorry, I always get this mixed up. It's like Peter Piper.
The fossil-fuel-free restriction.
Correct.
Okay. So are you going to move to that we, as a board, reconsider?
I don't think anyone else is on the same page as I am, so it's kind of a... All right, I'll move it.
And, or explain.
Well, we have to move to reconsider, I suppose, first.
Okay, so, and if, well, if we do that, then, well, let's see what happens. I'm of the view that we give Town Meeting the choice, probably expecting that Town Meeting would go for the fossil fuel restriction, even though we've kind of -- I like our more reasoned approach.
I like it, too, but I'm also realistic. I want to see fossil-fuel-free, so.
So I'd like to offer it to Town Meeting, so I'm not going to -- so my vote would be not to reconsider.
By the way, we're not requiring the planned renovations in the advisory committee motion to include fossil-free buildings. And we're putting renovations in buildings from the last century that, you know, are going to be environmentally very unsustainable at the expense of a building that would be 21st-century environmental.
Well, when you speak to the motion, you can say that.
I want to say, I think Mr. Green has an excellent point, that, you know, Town Meeting is focused on the fossil-fuel-free, but there's no way we can get it with these piecemeal approaches that Mr. Doggett is proposing.
Okay, so is it -- so the -- it's a select person Heller's motion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Select person Franco?
No.
Select person Heller?
Yes.
Select person Green?
No.
And chair votes no, so we're not reconsidering. And we're not -- so we're not reconsidering. Okay, so I think we're done. Thank you, Mr. Doggett, for that explanation and...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We'll see what happens tomorrow.
Thank you.
It will be interesting. Not tomorrow, Thursday.
Thursday, yeah.
Sometimes I wish it was tomorrow. We have a couple of items left on the agenda. We have board and commission appointments, and this is for the Indigenous People Day Celebration Committee. Mr. Kleckner?
Yes, I will round out names and this is your consent. Samiria Van Drizil.
Aye.
Vishni Samarawira.
Aye.
Raquel Helsi.
Aye.
So are you going to, or someone in your office going to notify them that they've been officially appointed?
Correct.
Okay.
Are we ready to make an appointment to the MBTA?
I wanted to work on it yesterday, but I was out, so I didn't have it. I mean, so just to understand, the MBTA Advisory Board, by statute, allows the chair, the select board, to serve in that capacity, then allows two other designees. In my tenure, anyway, Richard Leary was a designee and was consistently serving. Obviously, he's passed away, and we really don't have much representation at the advisory board, although they haven't been all that active lately. So you, as the chair, are automatically designated. I can make that call. Who you want to appoint as other designees? I haven't worked on that yet.
Yeah, it's something I am interested in, just public transportation, transportation systems, and more specific, and most specifically railroads and subways is a hobby interest of mine, though I'm not perhaps known as a -- I'm certainly not a transit engineer or anything like that.
Well, I do think it's important that we have somebody that's got sort of a town-wide perspective, because it's not -- this isn't just a transportation decision.
Right.
There's some financial implications, and I think a holistic view of everything is important.
Right. So that's something we -- but I also think we should query the Transportation Board to see if any of their folks are interested in this.
And should I advise the advisory board of your current status?
Yeah, sure.
And that, at least in the interim...
If it's okay with my colleagues.
Well, that's by statute.
I think we should have somebody that's on the mailing list, so to speak.
Right, yeah. It's interesting, when they queried Todd Corain about it after Mr. Leary had passed away, the official designee on their records was Ken Goldstein. So it's been a while. Okay, so that concludes tonight's -- do we need a vote on that, or just a...
No.
Because that's by statute.
By statute.
Yeah, okay. So that concludes our business for tonight.